We're members in attendance to reflect carefully on items on the agenda and make sure we have a good conversation on items that may be there.
Why can't you?
I did. So, welcome, welcome everybody here. I hope you're all having a great summer. I want to introduce Jennifer Schaper. Jennifer's our new recording secretary for the board. I think that it's sort of like here, obviously, because, I mean, so much of this has been flowing on Mrs. Skyditch, Mrs. Skyditch remains our board secretary, but the recording secretary responsibility is falling on Jennifer, so thank you for joining us here. Okay, I think we'll get started. Let's please stand for their place to play.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we're going to start from the very beginning with public comments, so if there's anyone in the audience that has any comments they want to make relative to the agenda or any other matters pertinent to the district, this is your opportunity. Seeing none, we're going to move to our third agenda item, which is a presentation. We have Alicia Ocklin Hart, who is our SAP coordinator from Karen, and I usually see you, Alicia, maybe once a year or so here for an annual update on how things are going in the district, so we appreciate you presenting this evening.
Okay, thanks. So, in front of you guys, you have actually two PowerPoint that I printed out for you. I can also get them to Ann, so you could email them out as well. Most of everyone up at the high school has one, but I have to get them out to everybody else. So, the PowerPoint that I want to talk about, or the key things that I want to talk about is the first one, which should be on top. It says, "Student Assistance Program Year End Report 2017-2018." The other PowerPoint that you have there is just all of the services that Karen provides at every different level, so it just breaks them all out for you, and you can look at that whenever you want. Okay. On page two, I want to show you or point out the referrals and assessments. So, you'll see that the high school referrals, if you remember the numbers from last year, which I'm sure you should know, they're down slightly. Everything actually went down slightly at every level this year, which doesn't necessarily mean that, I don't know how to explain it, it doesn't necessarily mean that the numbers are down, it might mean that we didn't have as many that weren't founded. So, in previous years, we might have had referrals that were brought to our attentions that after running the data and collecting it, we found that it wasn't really a student assistance issue. And so, it makes it look like there's a lot of referrals, when in reality, they weren't referrals at all. So, I think this year was a more accurate of almost every single referral that came in, we took action on, or something was done. So, numbers are slightly down, they're down by like ten referrals, maybe, ten, twenty referrals, not that much at each level. What is really good, though, is if you look at the assessments and how many students and parents accessed the primary recommendation. And for most of the buildings, it's somewhere between sixty to eighty percent of the parents followed through and did the primary recommendation from the assessment. That's incredible, that's really good. If you look across the county, that's a very good number. So, that's good. And so, we had two hundred and thirty-two referrals at the high school, we had a hundred and twenty-six referrals at the junior high, sixteen at Reiften, and then we had a hundred and twenty-four at Jacksonwald, a hundred and forty at Lorraine, and eighty-two at Owattan. And if you remember, this was our first year that we were at the elementary buildings. Last year, we proposed going into the elementary buildings for a half-day, once a week, so half-day, the first week of the month, we were at Jacksonwald, the second week of the month, for a half-day, we were at Lorraine, the third week, we were at Owattan, and then the fourth week was like an overflow. So, this was our first time really being in there, and we did tremendous things at the elementary building. We ran PaaS programs in two out of the three elementary buildings, where we did a prevention program called PaaS with all second and fourth graders, which has shown success in prevention moving forward. So, that had not been there in a long time, and we've restarted that. Our goal is to have that at every elementary next year in second and fourth grade.
I just have a question. Could you describe PaaS just from what you work on?
PaaS is promoting alternative thinking strategies, healthy thinking strategies, and it's, what we did here at Exeter was, the school counselors were already going in and doing classroom presentations with the curriculum that they had set up. So, our Jamie, who is the elementary student assistance specialist, she met with all three of the school counselors at the elementary, took their curriculum that they had been using already, figured out where there were gaps, so were there some social skills gaps, were there some healthy choices gaps, were there some, like, for the fourth graders, that moving on to fifth grade, that transition year, is there some stuff that we really want them to know? And we came up with our own curriculum based on pulling from there and pulling from what they have, and then she provided it. So, it's learning, learning skills, social skills, transition skills for moving up from fourth to fifth, all of that.
Has a student referred it to that program, or do all kids?
No, that's a tier-one program, so every second grader got it, every fourth grader got it, which is great.
Well, you say here, students in PaaS, and so, does that mean there's something unique going on with those kids?
Jax, no, uh-uh, no. PaaS was, is the prevention program, that prevention program was just put into every second grade classroom, every fourth grade classroom. Jacksonwald just was the one school that we did not get it into this year. Along with the PaaS program, if you turn over to page five, you can see all of the educational support groups, so the psychoeducational support groups that were done at all the different buildings. So, those are specific groups, and then kids that voluntarily either go into them at the junior and senior high schools, so they say they want them, and they voluntarily go into the groups, and their parents give permission for them. And then at Jacksonwald, oh, I'm sorry, that should say Jacksonwald, Lorraine, and Owattan. But at Jacksonwald, Lorraine, and Owattan, the parents or the school counselors would refer the kids into groups. So, those are your numbers. And this was the first year that Karen led Kids of Promise groups at all three of the elementary, and a Kids of Promise group are children that are affected by an addict or an alcoholic in their life. So, children of alcoholics and addicts, so that was really big, too. We had the time this year to actually provide groups for children of alcoholics and addicts at Lorraine, Jacksonwald, and Owattan. You can see there was thirteen, thirteen kids at Owattan, six at Jacksonwald, and, or six at Lorraine, and seven at Jacksonwald. Any questions on those? We also did, the junior high does a really amazing life school, life skills and emotional support classroom with their, with social skills with those children in those classrooms, and we do the same up at the high school.
One question, and tell me what I have to go on here. It appears that, like, to me, in my uneducated way, it seems to me these problems would get worse as kids are getting older, but the number is lower in the high school than it is at the junior high.
The group number is lower, so that means that the kids up at the high school might not voluntarily put themselves into a group, or voluntarily say they have a problem, or say they need help with something. So, it does tend to be a little bit lower at the high school, that always tends to be a little bit lower.
Is that because the younger kids, is that because the younger kids feel pressured to join, is they're recommended, or referred, or asked, or?
No, I think, I think they're more willing to listen at the junior high, and I think that by the time they get to the high school, some of them, especially junior or senior year, they feel like they don't need the help or want the help anymore. So, out of those sixty-six kids that were in groups that voluntarily put them in, most of them are ninth and tenth graders that I have in there, because they're, at that point, they seem to be more willing to be asking and doing it, where the seniors and the juniors, it starts to fall off a little bit.
What could that be a good thing, especially if they've gotten their act together?
It could be. A lot of the groups that we run for the ninth graders and the tenth graders are groups on more teen issues, and so, kids that are dealing with, like, bullying and stuff that has come up with them, and usually by eleventh and twelfth grades, some of those have resolved themselves, and they're not really talking about stuff like that anymore, so it could be that as well. And then, on that same page, our classroom and faculty presentations shows what we did at each level, or as many levels as we could. Something that was really great this year, and I worked with Dr. Miller and Dr. Winters on, was that we put together a whole mental health day for our, all of our faculty. It was on June fifteenth, fourteenth, and it was amazing. We had four really good presenters for elementary, and four good presenters for high school, and all the staff rotated through it, and so, we got a lot of really good feedback from there, and I think there's going to be some great things that are going to come out of it, and hopefully, we can continue to keep doing that. So, at the elementary level, Jamie, who does the elementary student assistance, she presented on Kids of Promise on children of alcoholics and addicts, signs and symptoms so that the teachers could see and refer, so there's a possibility that the groups for next year could even go up. Something up at the high school that was really great this year was that we did Mental Health Day, and we did the five signs of mental health, and we had kids come up into the gym. We did that on National Walkout Day instead of having the kids walk out. We had a lot of kids participate, and after that, we had a lot of student referrals that came in, so kids that were worried about other, their friends, so it was a really good event. So, that was a big one. At the junior high, Terri Taylor goes into every health classroom on the sixty-day cycle and does refusal skills, all current trends, mental health, drug and alcohol, and it's an amazing program, and she reaches about two hundred and seventy-one, two hundred and seventy junior high students. So, as far as, like, classroom and faculty presentations, we did a lot this year at all levels. And then, there's additional, there's just additional numbers that you guys can see. I think something that was really exciting for me, and I put it, I believe it was at the SAP success stories that we put, which is on page seven, we had thirty-three students go directly into inpatient mental health or drug or alcohol treatment or intensive. Most of those were direct phone calls from parents to me or to one of the school counselors at the high school. That is very telling of student assistance here at Exeter Township. I run, for Karen, I do a lot of maintenances, so I maintenance a lot of other school districts' teams, and I do it all throughout the year and over the summer. And a common problem with everybody's student assistance team is that the parents see SAP or student assistance as a negative, like, I don't want my kid involved in it, and we don't have that problem here. I mean, we might have a parent here or there, but for the most part, they know that if they call and they get somebody at the junior high, the high school, Reiften, and now the elementary buildings, they're getting somebody that's going to support them in every facet and get them and their child the best care possible. And I think those numbers of thirty-three students that came from direct referrals from their parents for mental health, that's, that's a huge number, you, you just don't see that anywhere else. So, that says a lot about our teachers, our counselors, and the whole program as a whole, K through twelve. And then, there was a success story with Terri put on there, there was a success story at Reiften, and I continued it on. And then, on the last two pages are just goals that I came up with, Terri came up with, and, you know, goals that we think that we would love to just improve or add on to what we're already doing.
I have a question about the crisis meetings on slide eleven, page six. It says twenty-four meetings with students who have an idea of suicide.
Yeah, suicidal ideations.
So, within that twenty-four meetings, can you give us an idea of how many students that actually is? Because I think, I'm, I'm not sure how about twenty-four students. That's mine.
That's okay, that's okay. Those are students that are coming from, either they're overheard by a teacher saying something that appears to be a suicidal ideation nature, or they're writing something. One thing that's excellent with the district is that a lot of our students will be on their Chromebooks and be writing to other students, saying about help, or like this, or I feel this way, or I want to hurt myself, and Sheldon and our tech department are amazing, they flag it immediately, a phone call comes out immediately to admin at the, whatever building it's in, myself, the school counselor, and we're on it immediately. And so, I bet, I don't know exactly how many are those, but there's a lot that Sheldon and the tech department catch, that we would have no idea, that we would never know, nor would the parents.
So, for each one of the students that goes into the crisis meetings, they have twenty-four meetings?
They, no, they have, it was twenty-four meetings, so just twenty-four meetings. The students, usually they're the parent, a crisis specialist, usually from Service Access Management, someone from SAM, if they come over, the school SAP, the school counselor, and then also SAP. And most of those students are going, either it's being determined by Service Access Management that they're fine to stay in school, and they help them, we help them then to get hooked up with outpatient services, or there's some of them that need further service than that, and their parents take them then either to the Ready Hospitals, Psych Department, or to St. Joe's for a further, more in-depth evaluation.
So, if they go to one of these crisis meetings, their threat is seen as valid?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. We don't, we do not judge any of them, so we always bring in an expert for them. So, we're not in any way calling and saying, ah, that just doesn't seem like it. We take every single one seriously. Phone calls are made to parents right away, phone calls are made to Service Access Management, and we get everybody together immediately.
Do all of these meetings result in some type of a follow-up action with either outpatient or inpatient care?
Some of them, or some of them are a follow-up action of meeting with maybe me weekly, or with Terri Taylor at the junior high weekly, if it's a junior high student, it could be case management, it could be that it's determined that they're already in counseling, but the counseling needs to be bumped up, so this moves them up to an intensive level instead of a regular outpatient. So, there's a couple of different levels that could happen.
Can you give me an idea of how many times, and I'm asking because I feel like in some times, there will be an elephant in the room, but how many times somebody is kidding when something like this comes up?
Somebody's kidding?
Yeah, they're joking, they, they say it because they think they're being funny.
We had one student that I can think of this school year at the high school that was making, he's, they were jokes. He was like, that's just a joke, I'm just joking. We followed the procedure, though, and every single time he did it, and it eventually stopped.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alicia, I have just a couple of questions. Do we do drug and alcohol surveys currently? Do we do that?
We did the PaaS this year.
Can you, can you generally characterize what we're seeing currently? And I don't ask you for, for numbers or statistics, I mean, just general impressions in terms of the nature of drug abuse in the district?
In the district?
The frequency, the, and the types of drugs and substances used might be?
Marijuana, pretty much. Marijuana is our big one. So, marijuana is prevalent and pretty equal with alcohol as of right now, across the county, across the United States. With legalizing it, and even though it's legalized for medical use, but just legalizing it, what teenagers believe it can do for them, even if they don't have a medical card or any of that kind of stuff, it's just that the perception is that it's okay. And it's that same perception that was around, you know, twenty years ago, well, if they're drinking alcohol at my house, they're just drinking alcohol. Well, that same kind of perception is with a lot of people now, a lot of adults now, if they're just smoking pot, it's not that big of a deal. So, pot is, is rampant. I mean, it's, it's from your kid that's not doing well in school all the way up to your high flyer kids. It's just, it's everywhere. So, it's, that's probably our biggest, our biggest battle.
And this is primarily recreational after school weekend, is it?
Recreational.
Is it used during school hours?
During school hours? No, I, I wouldn't say that that's rampant. I, I say that we definitely have occasionally kids that are using before they come to school, or might be bringing something in and maybe got caught like that, but that's not rampant. I think what's more rampant is just that it's really seen as a recreational, come home from a long day at school, they might go get high, they, they're not even necessarily waiting for the weekends.
Have you seen any, any shifts recently in terms of the age of first use for?
No, we have not.
It's pretty much stayed?
Yes, pretty much stayed the same. Your prescription pills have gone down a little bit, but are still pretty prevalent. There was a spike this year in cocaine use, not here in Exeter, but in some surrounding districts that had a spike in it. We didn't see it necessarily up at the high school, but it wa, it was around us, so that was kind of interesting. Synthetics are pretty low right now, synthetic marijuana is pretty low, asshots are pretty low, so those things are pretty low right now.
I don't know if this question just escaped me. Did you go to vaping?
Oh, vaping, yes, I'm sorry, I didn't even think of it. Vaping is huge, it's, it's like everywhere. We, as young as fifth graders, so the vaping program, doing the vaping presentation, we definitely want to get it into for the elementary teachers for the fifth and sixth grade, getting it down there at the start of the year to do for a presentation for Reiften, the, just so they know what to look for, what are some signs and symptoms of it, what, how are they vaping, what are they vaping out of it? We had a lot of vapes that were confiscated up at the high school, not sure about the junior high. They're not only vaping tobacco or nicotine out of them, they're also vaping marijuana out of it. So, the, but we did a vaping presentation for all secondary at the end of the school year on the June fourteenth date, which was huge, because we had a lot of them. A lot of the vaping devices now are, they look like thumb drives, so you can be charging them and using them right in school, and if you're not aware of what they look like, it would be very hard to catch somebody that's using them.
In terms of mental health diagnoses, anything that is more prevalent, any, any patterns you're seeing?
A lot of depression, a lot of depression, a lot of anxiety. What we've seen, but I think we've done a very good job at, especially with supported cyber, is that we, before we had supported cyber, it was really hard bringing a student back to school after they had been out for an inpatient stay, because coming back, you're extremely overwhelmed, there's a lot going on, and even easing them in very slowly, you know, for some, it still wasn't enough. But now, with our supported cyber option, we've really had great success where we've had kids that have, you know, they maybe can do one or two days at the high school with some classes, and then maybe they're doing afternoons over a supported cyber. We've really been able to work some really unique situations out and have some kids that have graduated that I don't think would have made it if we didn't have all those options. We also do reentry meetings, which we started about three years ago, so anyone coming back from placement has to have a reentry meeting. It's, it happens the day you come back from any kind of treatment. It's a meeting with school counselors, special ed case managers there, the student special ed, usually a school psychologist is there, admin, myself, one of the SAP people, and we have them talk about, like, what it's going to be like coming back, what are triggers, does schedules need to be changed, can you be in the same setting? And then, we, that day, they stay down in guidance, and we have their teachers visit them that day to go over, like, what they have to make up, what's essential, so it's not overwhelming, kind of plan it out on a calendar. I usually help on those days with, like, did you, when you discharged, did you get your next mental health session set up? Do you have an outpatient person? A lot of times, those aren't set up before they leave, and so, I'll work with the parent then, after the kid gets settled in, the parent and I'll sit down, and we'll look at, like, what's the insurance, you know, do you, do you need help, do we need to call SAM in to help to get case management, so different stuff like that. So, we, our reentry program was just presented, Exeter's reentry program was just presented, I presented it in February at the Pennsylvania Student Assistance Conference in State College. It's also where the middle school principals and teachers are, and I presented our program that we started three years ago, and I've taught it, it was very well taken up there, and then, since then, why Missing Areas School District asked for it, I showed them how we do it, and I just had Mifflin School District in last week, and I gave them our whole reentry. So, our reentry program is, is really good.
You said that some of the students suffer from depression. Do you have any clues as to why young children should be depressed, and what is causing them to get into a depression?
Well, there's a lot more grief, there's a lot more loss with our students just in general. There's a lot more traumas that kids are suffering at an earlier age. We have a lot more students that have a mother or a father that has a mental health diagnosis, so there's some genetics involved in it. So, there's a, there's a lot of different reasons, but, yeah, and we're seeing it as early as elementary with some childhood depression, childhood anxiety.
Some children, they seem to be almost afraid about just school at the times. Do you know what causes that? Is it the date for not being successful, or there, or there, there's something wrong at home that they're concerned about?
Maybe, it could be that they're, it could be that they don't want to leave whatever is going on at home, so they might be wanting to be at home to take care of whoever's there, that, that could be what's going on. It could also be that they're feeling overwhelmed, so being at school, they think that if they can avoid school, not be there, they won't feel it, what they don't realize is that it just keeps on snowballing, so it's worse if you're not coming in. So, that's what's helped a lot with our supported cyber program, is like, if we can get them in even for just a couple hours, then it doesn't snowball as much, and you don't see so much of the anxiety.
Yeah, I mean, do you think that childhood should be a time of fun and carefulness and everything else, and yet, we're, we're facing these problems early, early in our schools? And, and it's, it's kind of overwhelming when you think of it, that children can't be children, and maybe they have to take on some responsibilities, maybe, you know, that, that are, that are way over their heads, you know, and, and, you know, they can't handle it. I mean, I, I don't know what we do about that.
Well, I, I think we've done, we've, we're moving in the right direction, because we have someone in there, and we're helping the school counselors that are already doing a great job at the elementary, so we're just adding support to them. I think we're doing, we're in the right direction, we're going in the right direction.
Right, right, thank you. I just wanted to ask, when there is a discipline issue, like a fight, or let's say a Jew was confiscated, or a student was caught in the bathroom smoking, what is SAP's goal? Is there, is there always a SAP referral?
So, for the tobacco, we offer what's called Project Connect, which is a nicotine sensation group, so we have kids that do join that. We had two of them that were run this year at the high school. So, kids will opt into that if it's a first offense, and then SAP is also involved as a referral and for anything else that the parent or them want or need. I've done some one-on-one education with the students. For fights... For fights, it's a referral to student assistance as well. In some cases, it's resulted in an assessment where I've done a more comprehensive behavioral health assessment with the student and gave some recommendations. In some cases, it's just doing more peer mediation or conflict resolution. So, I might be there with admin, school counselors, and all the students together that were in the fight, trying to figure out like how can we, you know, you're gonna be back in school together. So, like, uh, how can we get along? How can we avoid each other? What, what's our ground rules? We do a lot of that, too.
I have a, maybe a more general question. I think it's, it's something that I've often said. When we know what kind of things in terms of substance abuse or drug abuse that students are doing, we all kind of know what's going on. It's just that it's a little bit more behind the scenes. Do you think that that's actually true? Do we really have an understanding or a grasp of everything that's going on?
I, I definitely don't think we have a grasp of everything that's going on. I do think we have a-
Well, everything is a stretch for a while.
Yeah, I do think we have a pretty good picture, though.
Okay.
It's, it's more getting the, what I see is it's more getting the education out there to the parents at this point, at the high school, to let them know that it's not too late. We can still do some work, getting the parents to set up better boundaries at home. What does that look like? Helping them to put a structure in place that maybe hasn't been there for a couple of years. And we do a lot of that, you know, supporting them to be a little bit tougher, you know, so. But I definitely think we know what's there. I mean, I'm sure there's stuff that gets biased, but I think we have a good understanding of what's there. Now, it's just really getting the information out and educating. I do think we need to do a better job of educating the students on the reality and facts of the vaping of the marijuana, and different stuff like that. At least at the high school level, I feel like we need to do a better job of that. That's actually a goal. That's on, for the end.
Is there a lot of crossover with what you guys do and with what, I think it's, the class is called Wellness? I think every student has to take wellness for, you guys might be able to correct me here, but it's nine, eight, and ten.
Well, that's what I was just talking about.
Did I just say nine, eight, ten?
Yes. That's right.
I'm having a bad night.
That is, that's exactly what I was just talking about. That's the goal. For eighth grade, Terry Taylor goes in once every cycle and does a prevention. So, at the, at the junior high, I feel like we really have it covered. At the high school, I think we need a little bit more in there.
Um, just one more question. Within the prescription medication that you were talking about earlier, how it's been decreasing slightly but not significantly, is Adderall included in there? And do we see a use from students who aren't prescribed Adderall to use it for exams, papers, and things like that?
We've heard of it and it's in there, yeah, definitely. Stimulants are definitely in there.
I have one more question. What is SAP's role currently with social media and also like the trending television shows, AKA Netflix?
Thirteen ways.
Correct.
Yeah.
Like, is, you had mentioned about informing students more. I, I don't know, I just wonder how many students are actually being shown how much, how, how detrimental social media can be as well as some of those shows. I have an older daughter and she watched the second series.
The second series.
Yeah, and she, she said, "Oh, it was horrible." Like, she, she was fearful for younger kids to watch it.
We, we did, when it came out, we put all the talking points that PA's suicide awareness at the state level put out, we put out to all of the, um, all the parents. So, there was a Connect Ed app that went out district-wide. So, we did that. I do as much as I can in the group setting with stuff like that. There's a list of websites or apps that we talk, that I talk to my kids a lot about, like, this is not a good app. This is not a good place for you to be on. The things on here are not true, they're detrimental, stuff like that.
Do you ever foresee, and maybe it requires more time in the district, but, um, informing all students about some of these things versus just your small groups?
Well, that, I think that's where the wellness class, that's, I think that's another component of wellness. Like, I feel like we could really, the wellness curriculum as a whole, there's a lot of different facets that we could be putting in there. Now, I wouldn't reach ninth through twelve, but it would reach all ninth and tenth graders, which would be a good start. So, that's where I would definitely see that it would fit very easily. Cause that, that is wellness, I mean, it encompasses all of that, yeah.
Well, and that's where I see, personally see some correlation into depression.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the, I just think we could do a better job at like what is mental health? What is depression? What are the signs and symptoms? What are coping strategies for it? There could be stuff on anxiety, social anxiety, phobias, school phobias in particular. There could be stuff on bullying, the apps. I mean, the junior highs wellness program addresses a ton of those things. I think we've just fallen off a little bit at the high school and we're looking at that to see how we can get that all back on track.
And is there a, and maybe we'll talk about it this evening, but with the new program coming out from the BCIU, we'll talk about the, the app?
Maybe we'll get involved in that.
That's not involved, oh, SAP's not involved?
That's security.
I got it, okay. I didn't know if that was like almost like a referral thing, too. Different.
Totally different.
Totally different. All right.
I could, could, cause I didn't know.
Clearly I don't either.
Oh, it's a show.
Yeah, real quick. So, as I'm listening to you talk, I'm thinking that I wish that every parent in Exeter could hear the things that you're saying. I feel like you've talked about it, really informing the teachers and the counselors and just, you know, the staff and having these presentations. And I was curious, you know, when I look at what your goals up here are, the number one goal or the one that's listed at the top at least, is to increase awareness for parents. So, just curious, in other districts or in Exeter in the past, have you ever done any presentations for parents?
So, yeah.
And just when you were talking about the drugs, and I mean, my kids are still a little bit, I hope I don't have to worry about that. But, you know, there's other parents that, they're naive, their kids would never do that, and you don't think about it? So, you know, informing them of what signs to look for, even in the depression and the anxiety, to be that first response in helping their child and reaching out.
So, we used to do a lot of prep programs, which was a parenting program. We used to offer them a lot at Reifton. We offered them at the junior high, we offered them to high school. We didn't get very good attendance at them. You know, you would put it on, have a snow date, have a rain date, and still maybe only get five to ten different parents that would come. So, it wasn't hitting as much. We've looked at different ways to do it. The Connect Ed emails, like sending something out, one pager that has like signs and symptoms of something that's just come out, like the vaping. We talked about putting together just a one-page form. This is what the devices look like, this is the amount of nicotine that's in them, and sending it out. It seems, that seems to be a better way to be getting to the parents than just, than trying to hold something and only getting the same five to ten parents every time. At the elementary buildings and at Reifton, they seem to get more so at the elementary, but parents seem to come in more. So, we have talked about maybe possibly offering a parent night at each of those buildings on different topics. It would be more geared, though, to the elementary setting, but a lot of the apps and the social media stuff, which definitely starts down there, and even the vaping stuff, you'd never know what, that if you're not gonna have a high school parent that's in there but has younger siblings that goes. So, we could easily put something in that way, too. But that is a goal. It's, we definitely need to figure out different ways to be getting the information to them.
The other thing, if you start with elementary level like that there, you have a parent like me, I don't have kids at Reifton, they're, you know, older. So, if you get me maybe when I'm an elementary student, maybe I'll be more likely to come. Cause I'll see the, the benefit in it.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, so hopefully it's something that we can definitely put on the books for this year. It's definitely something that we, we have time to do.
Just have a question, you know, about trying to, trying to, actually, I know how hard it is to try to bring families in for immensity and lives are full, and it's really hard and it's very discouraging. You put together a beautiful presentation and you have three or four parents show up and it just takes the wind out of your sails. You know, is there another way to go about it? Webcasts or podcasts?
We've talked, yeah.
You know, maybe we could do it so parents from, from home, maybe you could go on a computers and actually, you know, participate in it, have an interactive, you know, conversation, and you, we might get more folks doing it.
Karen as a whole has just started doing things like that. That's, it's in the, our action plan for the summer. So, we're looking to put together a podcast that we will put out there and that would be available, that we could link into, that we could give to you guys, different podcasts. So, that's definitely something that we're thinking about.
And just along with that, you know, you had mentioned like SAM. So, when you said SAM, I know what that is, cause I work with kids with special needs, and the majority of people don't know what that is. And I find out with the kids that I work with, that's the biggest problem is, they, they may know that there's something going on and that they need help, but they don't even know where to start. So, do the families even know what Karen is? Do they even know what, I don't know?
Most parents in, in Exeter know what Karen is in student assistance. We have a pre, we've, we've done a pretty good job of marketing it, so most of them know. The same with service access management. We have service access management intake days that are actually at the high school. And parents from the elementary building, Reifton Junior High, come up, sit down to get themselves set up with intakes and with counselors and get that whole process started. So, I think we're doing a pretty decent job of that, of marketing it that way, but it could always be expanded upon. So, you know, if it goes out maybe in a newsletter, if it goes out in email at the beginning of the year, just explaining the acronyms, what everything stands for and the process, I definitely think that's not, it's not a bad thing. It's not gonna hurt. Yeah.
Well, Dr. Hammer, as we all know, this is being taped. And maybe this district, you know, could send out something to the parents saying that they want to find out about SAP, you know, that they could look at this tape, you know, this presentation.
Well, I mean, certainly information here. Yeah, you're right. But, and, and with, I think your information would be something I'd like to see on the website somewhere. You know?
Yeah, you guess.
So that it'd be available to the public.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
What about if we took her segment right here and put it up as a separate video?
Or you can have the informant share it. I, I don't, I don't know whether it would be compelling enough. I mean, I don't know about this presentation, I mean, I think a presentation of some kind. I'm not sure whether word presentation would be the best.
Your blog has things and things like that.
But the blog. But I, I really think it's, I, I like the avenue of trying to move toward, you know, using the various electronic media, social media possible to really outreach to our families who are just too busy to actually physically come to, to meetings and things like that. I, I, I think all ideas should be on the table. Thanks for your thoughts on that. I mean, and I think that we rely on you guys to kind of give us some, give us some thought and give us some directions in terms of how you, you think we facilitate it.
Mm-hmm, definitely.
Thanks for, for being here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks, Susan.
Thank you.
And I'd also like just to say, you know, this is, this is not just, I mean, when we think about this in isolation, yeah, we know how important it is, but also it kind of falls into our bigger picture of, you know, addressing school violence. Because knowing our kids, having a, having a conduit for information to know about, you know, the kids who are having problems, having kids on the radar, you know, how many times have we heard about, you know, school violence where somebody's been a chronic issue in the school? A student has been a chronic issue in the school, it comes back and it's a horrible act, you know, school violence. And, and by knowing our kids, I think we are one step ahead of that. And I think it's so critical, we forget so many times how important this is because we don't, we're not having the harmful outcomes. You know, you, you can't really measure prevention. You really can't say we stopped X number of horrible situations in our school. So, I just, you know, I think everybody who works in this area, we, we have to make sure we, we recognize just the value that goes beyond sometimes just that individual students, addressing that individual students. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to our presentation or agenda this evening. The next area we have are minutes. We have two sets of minutes for approval this evening, along with our, the workshop meetings from June twelfth and the board voting meetings from June nineteenth. I move that we approve these, these minutes as listed in the agenda. Second. Motion of the second, end of discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Treasurer's report. Mr. Page.
I move the treasurer to report for a period ending in six thirty twenty eighteen. The following financial statements are attached. The YTD summary of revenue and expenditures, loan funds, statement of assets, liabilities, and fund balances, payroll and fringe benefit summary, investment statements, and student act income. So, I move them.
Motion being a second. For the second. For the second, thank you. Uh, any, any discussion here?
I'll tell you, I came in here to talk to Dr. Phillips on Friday for two or three minutes. She was in here doing this report on Friday afternoon. Credit to Pat for being in here.
For two hours, right?
She gets the big bucks.
She gets paid.
I, I, I have, I have, I have the permission to come back next month.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna move into board policy. We have several policies that are up for second reading, which have already been vetted and discussed. They've been reviewed by board members, by administrators, and those are policies A through F. They include policy on surveys, student assistance program, electronic places, foreign exchange program, contests, and unlawful harassment. And I, and I recommend we approve those policies for second reading.
Second.
The motion ends second. Any discussion about any of those seconds on that, A through F?
Sorry, I do have a question. On policy two thirty-seven, and I feel like this is something that, my mind's a little foggy tonight, but sorry, I apologize. But I feel like Jasmine's asked this question before. So, in policy two thirty-seven, it says under authority, the term there that's in green, except as specified by the administrative regulations as approved by the superintendent. Can you clarify a little bit more what that means? And, you know, if a parent was curious about the administrative regulations, how can they get them or clarification?
So, your question is primarily about administrative regulations? Because we, we have several administrative regulations.
Everything in green there is my question.
Okay. Yeah, so I think in that particular case, language was taken out of the policy that was viewed as being more relevant if it would be contained in administrative regulations. Regulations will be attached to all these policies, so they'll be, they'll be accessible on the website as all policies would be. And, and, and the purpose of administrative regulations are flexible. They can be designed by the administrative team and approved by the superintendent, but they don't require board approval. So, they can, they can move and change and be added to or expanded or reduced if necessary. And, and when something's maybe a little bit too, too specific in a policy or may change at some point in a policy, it's generally regarded as better served in an administrative regulation. That's a general practice.
So, then if I'm looking at this view, so you're saying an exception could be made to this policy that would lead to the rest? So, for example, if there was a child that needed an electronic device, say, in the classroom for calling or something, there could be an exception made to this policy? That's what I-
Absolutely. Yeah, I know, this is not really to respect any appropriate use of electronics, uh, you know, devices, but it will be spes, you know, spelled out much more specifically in administrative regs. Good question.
Are you asking for the administrative regs?
I'm not asking for them in this moment. I think I'm asking more if a parent were to read this policy and wanted to understand it better, could they easily access them to be able to answer their question?
Yeah, and I, my question would be, you know, where are the regs on this particular policy?
And we're working on it as we go through.
So, this would be what you would expect to see? Cause this is gonna show up on our website without administrative regulations.
For now, we're starting next week when we are administrative, uh, administrative, you should be, we're working on it. Most of the administrative regs.
So, this would be, I think, important to make sure.
Sure.
Is this subject addressed at all in student?
Is this subject addressed at all in the student handbook to give students an idea of when an acceptable use of electronic devices is?
Now, our handbooks are much more specific.
And 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 the handbooks have to be consistent with administrative regulations as well. So that's, I mean, that's one thing we've always tried to do is to kind of make sure there's that, you know, there's that consistency between what we have in policy, what's in regs, and what's in our, in our handbook. Sometimes there is inconsistency. We change a policy, we've got to go back and take a look at what's in our handbook.
And that's why we review every leadership meeting.
Does this policy also apply to, um, school events, like basketball games, football games, things like that, field trips? Or is that different?
Well, I think they would, but it, and again, it could be more in the handbook covered than it would be. When you, specifically, are you talking about like,
Well, I was
like cell phones would be more.
Like taking pictures, you know, it's something about photographs. Um, you know, that that tends to be a big thing that comes up, I mean.
In school, I think, I think it'd be a little bit harder to
Okay.
Release, if you want to use that term, at football games.
Okay, and I know, um, at the high school level, and I'm assuming it's down below too, um, cell phones are not allowed during the classroom periods, right? Like only at lunch. Between periods and at lunch. Is, this is maybe a dumb question, but.
No, no question.
Allow, sometimes, but, um, is, is they, are they trying to place? Isn't that the charge?
My policy is covered as a drug.
Okay, so that's like a different thing.
Yes.
Just curious if we were talking about.
Any other, any other discussion, any other questions about, uh, policies A through F? So far, you've had a motion and a second. Okay, all in favor of approving policies A through F for second reading, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the next group of, of policies, um, story with policy G are are new. We haven't had a chance to have these discussions about these policies at a workshop meeting, so, you know, we'd like to give the board a little bit more time if necessary to talk about these. And obviously, we're not approving these for final reading tonight, but, um, there are several here. I know the first one, item G, is something that was requested by Dr. Miller. I'm not mistaken because we may have had a, uh, a recommendation or directive from PDE.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, is there anything that you want to say about?
It just refers
one thirteen, one one.
It just refers to discipline for students with disabilities. Uh, students who are identified and we didn't have language in there for students who are thought to be eligible. And students who are thought to be eligible who are under the process of being evaluated, that the parent asks for evaluation, they sign a document that there's sixty days that we have to evaluate the student. And if there's a discipline procedure, discipline issue that happens during those sixty days, they are under the umbrella of special education and thought to be exceptional. And all the, all the regulations in there would fall, they would fall under that. So we have to get that language in there.
And do students who are thought to be exceptional is defined in here too?
Yes.
You know, what they actually are. It could be someone who makes a comment or it could be a parent who actually, uh, or or teacher or counselor who, uh, makes a, uh, a recommendation or that their expresses a concern about students.
Makes a request for evaluation.
So they fall into a protected class.
They fall into a protected class, yes.
Yeah, okay. So that was the, and and because that was, uh, part of that PDE directive for us to kind of make the, we've added this.
Yes, we had a mini audit. Um, we have to give our documentation every year of how many suspensions we have and we kind of bring it on the radar. And so they had to come down and do an audit and we were following all correct PDE and federal regulations and we passed that audit. Yeah, uh, but the only thing that didn't, didn't make it was our policy. We had to update our policy.
So this is, this is a closing line.
Yes, this is that being from fine.
And again, just for first reading tonight, we've already revised this policy early in the school year, so this is a second policy. Um, home education students, uh, is on policies one thirty seven and one thirty seven point one. This was a long anticipated policy. I know our policy committee has been working carefully with, uh, uh, you know, the administration and and particularly the high school administration in terms of, uh, and 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 I think this is something that we merit, I think, just a little more conversation and discussion for our board because I'm not so sure you're totally aware of it. You know, there has been interest in providing opportunities for students to kind of, uh, who are home schooled to have access to instruction in the school. And some school districts that currently provide that many do. Uh, and we've kind of looked at their policies, we've looked at their, our procedures and and, um, we've kind of expanded opportunities for kids who are homeschoolers. There is no obligation for school districts to allow students who are homeschooled to participate in, um, in any coursework provided by the school district. And if it is allowed, uh, it would have to be through the developmental policy, the district policy, which is what we're doing here. It's, it's limited in terms of how, how involved they can get, and I think it's limited to one course per semester, up to two courses per year. And it's limited to nine through twelve. Um, they would have to meet certain criteria conditions and and there may, may be some restrictions on certain classes. And and all those would be, um, I think, laid out through administrative regulations that would be attached to this, uh, this policy. We'd like to see these policies, uh, be implemented for September, uh, which means that we would really like to see it get first reading approval this evening and second reading approval in August, so it can be ready to start in September. We want to make sure the board is really
clear.
And understands the, um, you know, the rationale and and whatever impact it may be of, you know, making this opportunity to all the homeschool students.
And those administrative regs are already completed?
Are they good? Yeah.
So this is the, uh, I'm sorry.
I have to turn the mic on, Susan.
Uh, this, this is the one that's, uh, Hunter brought.
Yeah, this was initially brought up by Hunter and and I think his, I think he was maybe aware of some families who really were interested in this. One of the other provisions in this actually is also the ban situation, nine through twelve. You know, if somebody wanted to participate and banned their homeschooler, they, there were some problems with that because to participate in ban, you'd also have to participate in the classroom, um, during the day, which means you have to enroll in a class, which was not prohibited, which was, was prohibited by our policy. So this expands the banned option for the extracurricular part of it. Um, and then, I mean, obviously, it also opens up specific courses that they can request to take as well. And what?
My question, uh, Dr. Hammer, you asked about, asking about the rationale. What was the rationale on one, one class per semester? Just curious, because I was just, in my head, I was thinking it made more, not make more sense, but in my situation, we do have students that attend classes and were block scheduling. Um, so, but for instance, I had a ninth grade honors English student take my course, third block, and then she took like FCS fourth block. So then she could stay and participate in the extra, extracurricular activities when she was in drama. So she was allowed, and then she could take the bus home, but she had to get brought to school. So that's why I was just wondering, you know, everybody, every school is different. Our scheduling here at Exeter is different. What, what was the rationale between just one class a semester?
Yeah, I'd have to turn that over to her. I'm sure she made that recognition.
And again, I think what we did is, being the first time that we've done this, we discussed it, sort of dipping our feet into the water to first get it started and see how it would go. Um, and, um, Mr. Aaron's wanted this to go forward. Um, we talked about how many courses that would be offered based on numbers, would students be able to, uh, be accepted in certain courses? And it just became, uh, again, I would say it may be just too big to take off right now. I think this was a way to get started and see how it would go. And then we could expand from there. Is that, is that pretty much correct?
I, I think, um, we started with the intention of having a larger availability, but when we saw all of the conditions, um, that could arise, uh, such as bumping kids out of the class that they needed to graduate that were in the high school full time, um, I, I think, once we saw how many different scenarios could play out, we wanted to make sure that it was limited on the, on the front end and in the number of classes and not only in the conditions for enrolling somebody. Um, I think one of the biggest concerns we had is somebody, uh, enrolls in the high school full time and they need the class that's currently full. Uh, so that, that would probably be the biggest concern I ended up with that. But I would hope, like Dr. Phillips was saying, that this would be the lead up from what we're looking for.
Welcome, Mr. Brady. Any other thoughts about the home school policy? I'm just gonna give Jim just a, a chance to, to maybe, I don't know if you have, Jim, if you had a chance to kind of see the, the home school policy.
But we're, uh, but I didn't see anything good in there also. I hear something, a way of appearing to look at it like, you know, when I read through it.
Did you read through it? Okay.
I, I mean, I didn't see anything. I saw something under the first of the two. The second, it, it looked absent, or maybe I feel like.
It was very small on the second.
Yeah, so there's, there's.
It's a set of pieces.
It just made, it just said, y- yes versus no. You can or it is one, in the second, but one thirty.
It was very, it was very.
Yeah, very. Okay, so that's one thirty seven point one and one thirty seven. Uh, if there are any questions for your questions about that. Uh, there are PSBA recommended policies for student recruitment, homeless students, dating violence, educational stability for children in foster care. And then we move into the three hundreds, which are, you know, historically the main, yes, the whole new sections. I'm thrilled we're moving our way through. I'm just gonna say one thing about that. Your three hundreds are gonna consolidate, uh, the four hundreds and the five hundreds. So, uh, new three hundred policies are going to include administrators, uh, professional employees, and support staff. So, you know, as opposed to having redundant policy, you know, fashion we have right now with, you know, three, four, or five hundred, it'll make things a bit, a bit simpler. I think easier for HR, you know, and and I think easier for us as a board, uh, to manage the policies. So when we prove, let's say, three hundred point one, we'll probably be also eliminating four hundred and one and five hundred and, and one, which are duplicates, you know, for our professional staff and support staff.
Six hundred and ninety, do you think that would happen?
No.
I don't know.
You know what?
That's a good question.
Do we have to concurrently eliminate the other ones?
Yeah, that's, I think we're gonna have to do that, yeah. So, I, I mean, I think that should be part of the action when we do second reading. We'll make a recommendation to not only approve for final reading, but also eliminate the other policies that are applying. So, yeah, so you have creating a position, which is sort of a generic, you know, policy that relates to all classes of employees. And then three oh two, which really has to do with just the appointment of superintendent, assistant superintendent. Some of these were new policies, brand new policies. Um, uh, I think, you know, now I look at, I look at PDEs, I'm just trying to, they, you know, the, the two thousand and five, two hundred and five, which is the student recruitment, that's new. Homeless policy, or homeless students is, is a new policy. Dating violence is a new policy. And educational stability for children in foster care is new. So those are all brand new policies, recommended by PSBA. So, uh, again, I, uh, if there's no we did, we didn't make any, we didn't make any, so I'm, I'm recommending at this point right now that we, um, approve of first reading, you know, policies, uh, on the agenda G through O. Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Great, thank you. That takes care of policies. And we'll move it over to business functions, Mr. Gill.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. It is recommended that the, uh, Board of School Directors exonerates Saint Lawrence Borough Tax Collector from the collection of the remaining two thousand seventeen per capita tax duplicate for Saint Lawrence, consisting of a hundred seventy six delinquent per capita and seventy seven exonerated per capita bills. Eighty-three point two percent collection rate and authorizes the district to submit the delinquent per capita bills to Burckheimer Associates for collection. Prior year consisted of, consisted of a hundred thirty three delinquent per capita and eighty exonerated per capita bills, eighty-six point three percent collection rate.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I thought Burck's DIT was the, the, uh.
You mean doing the collection?
Yeah.
Burck's DIT collects, uh, for the PCC, uh, earned income tax and our LST as well as business privilege taxes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Arbiter Pay Payers User Agreement. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to accept a user agreement for arbiter pay payers subject. So solicit a review of the agreement. This will become effective with the two thousand eighteen nineteen school year. Arbiter pays an empty IC insured trust account that allows for secure electronic payments to referees throughout, uh, through Arbiter Sports Software. Arbiter software is currently used to assign referees to games. Fees are based on game fees paid and ranging between a dollar sixty and two thirty-five per transaction. Estimated cost of the district is seven seventy per year. Districtal benefit from reduced business office labor costs, five eighty, check stock, and postage.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, Ann, did you say when we discussed this, that this would basically turn out to be a wash?
It would, when you take into account, uh, the materials involved, the addition of five hundred plus, uh, checks to officials who, that does that up. And this is something that's recommended by, um, Burck County Athletic Association, the ADs, health directors. They use arbiter pay to schedule officials. They're already using this software. So natural progression to kind of go green, uh, would be to, uh, Mr. Gatt and, uh, the secretary. They know who's gonna be assigned after the event, like, who is paid and then they will be direct deposit. The officials have to sign up for arbiter pay. If they decide not to sign up for arbiter pay and they want us to pay them direct, they're not, we will pay them once a season. So it's really trying to streamline all classes.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Lenovo Chromebook Lease Purchase Option. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to exercise the purchase option of Lenovo Chromebook lease that expired on June thirty, two thousand eighteen, for the remaining seven hundred thirty-two Chromebooks at a cost of thirty-three thousand thirteen dollars and twenty cents. And further authorize district administration to dispose of six hundred ninety Chromebooks through sale to Asset Genie Inc. At an estimated sales price of price of thirty-nine thousand six hundred, which is fifty-four seventy dollars per unit. Returning the Chromebook to Lenovo would be at a cost to the district.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ann, great job on this. We're making six thousand dollars to purchase these things.
Well, a lot, a lot of credit goes to Joe Wayne and his staff.
And Jim.
The intent was to give them back and the lease option to return them, but Lenovo did not make it easy and they, they made it quite expensive. Joe and his staff reached out to Asset Genie for purchases of Chromebooks. They evaluated condition and we determined that we're gonna do the buyout, uh, and we were able to get them to lower their price from their initial proposal. And then they'll be estimate, but they estimated that Asset Genie will purchase them. It was a better situation rather than latter topic.
Thank you, Joe.
Any further discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Crisis Go Emergency App Agreement. It's recommended that the Board of School Directors authorize district administration to participate in the Crisis Go Consortium pricing for a three-year period, two thousand eighteen nineteen through two thousand twenty twenty-one. BCIU's received a grant which will cover the cost for the first year.
Excuse, excuse me. I, I read an update that just came through earlier this week. Um, through, um, Dr. Hackman and the interview unit, uh, they, uh, received a press release that, uh, Crisis Go app is going to be giving free access to school districts throughout the state. But the platform that they'd be providing is quite a minimal platform. So Dr. Hackman discussed with them the fact that our hundred thousand dollar grant that we have, uh, would that be enough to, uh, provide us the full suite of tools? So instead of paying for this service, uh, we will be receiving, uh, two years free of full app, full. So instead of paying for this service, we will be receiving two years free of full app, full suite access due to the grant from, that Dr. Schwein told us. So this no longer needs to be an option. We'll be getting two, four, free years of Crisis Go App use.
So do we even need to discuss it at this point?
I think we can remove this at this point.
Do we have to?
Unless anybody has any questions, but I know, Mrs. Hager, you were talking about the app itself. It is, and I did send a, an attachment to it, but we will have no charge at all for two full years of free use. And that's due to the interview unit and the grant that we got from Sarah Schwein.
Could we, I mean, does it make sense for us to approve and, and?
Acceptance.
Accept, or, or, or authorized district administration to participate in, in, in Crisis Go program. So, we're sort of authorizing, so the amendment would essentially just be limited, you know, on this motion to recommending the school board to authorize district administration to participate in the Crisis Go Consortium.
Two years.
For two years. So, okay, for, for a, a two-year period, uh, two thousand eighteen nineteen through two thousand nineteen, nineteen twenty. Is that satisfactory?
Second.
There's a second on that. Any discussion? All in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If this will run a vote?
No. I think there wasn't a second on the original motion, so we wouldn't have to.
Okay.
We actually should have seconded that, or else this was all a bogus conversation.
Well, it was seconded.
No, we never got, because it was a little, we never got a chance to second.
Well, yeah, but never had a chance to make an initial motion, I guess.
Yeah, oh, okay.
We need to already make the motion, we need to second, then we can go to the section, we can second that, we can then vote. But if we decided we voted all ahead, then we vote on the motion as it.
I ask for your answer.
You are, you are an official parliamentarian.
I was, actually.
You know, I think, I think we should really make you the parliamentarian.
It was last century.
Okay, well, let's, so then, got to do this, Jim, we're starting all over. We're going to start from the very beginning, is this, nothing ever happened?
It's recommended the Board of School Directors authorizes district administration to participate in Crisis Go Consortium pricing for a three-year period, two thousand eighteen nineteen, two thousand twenty twenty-one. B C I U received a grant, the, yes, we're going to do the original thing. We're going to do the original thing.
No, don't, no, don't read the original thing, you just cut through the middle and just do what Bob said. So I motion to recommend what Bob had recommended moments ago.
Recommend the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
I motion to recommend a recommendation.
So this is the initial. This is the initial.
You say as documented in the agenda, someone seconded it, then we have to, we second it. Discuss before we vote, we vote, we go there, go to the next vote, and we close.
We don't have to amend it, we can just cut through that.
No, we've, we've eliminated the super ten's recommendation. Yeah, we, we eliminated it. So let's, let's wrap this up. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second to?
Somebody better second it, or there's going to be some.
Any discussion? Two years. It'll be from two thousand eighteen nineteen through two thousand nineteen twenty.
This, this was when we thought we were going to pay for two years, and we only get one year free. But then just this week, we found out that the grant would cover two years in total. And then we'll be able to evaluate, and then we can second it, and decide if we continue as a county. Is this a county why?
Can I ask Bob, and you might have said this, I apologize. In your, the original email, it said that you had to sign a commitment.
That was through this.
Okay, they're not doing that for the two years?
No, but they're going to ask us to, to participate, which is what we're authorizing now.
Okay, got it.
Any further discussion?
So this rewriting thing makes it, we don't have to go through all the issues?
I think we're ready to move forward on the vote. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, so, thank you, Mr. Butler. We're going to move on to personal opinion, and I think that'll be Mr. Brink.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the changes and additions to the extracurricular salary positions, exhibit B of the C B A per the attached memo.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Hang on, okay, we do have discussion.
Okay, so, um, we're approving new positions here, which will come with new money to be paid to new coaches for sports, for oral group, teachers, et cetera, et cetera. How much more is this all going to cost?
My estimate is about seventy-five hundred dollars.
So, we're going to add seventy-five hundred dollars to our budget. How are we going to pay for it? Because if we just keep adding stuff and adding stuff, our budget grows completely out of control. So do we need to put a plan in place to pay for it instead of just adding?
When we build the budgets for salaries and wages, specifically coaches and advisors, we base it on, we base it on the current year, seventeen eighteen advisor for coaches. They're appointed every year, so their turnover curves. So, um, turnover replacement bodies are higher than level one, which is, so, um, while we try to realize savings through attrition, that will help toward these additional positions that are added for changes. I mean, that's how, how I'm doing it. I didn't get the information before the nineteenth of June. Or I would have added it, and provided the information to the board, but sometimes things happen and it just doesn't, you know, get to me in time, get to me, so.
Okay, so I also saw in the, in one of the attachments, in listing the salaries of all the coaches, et cetera, we had bonuses for people. Are bonuses a common occurrence in public education?
That's language that's contained in a teacher contract that's been negotiated when they are beyond level eight, I believe it is. It's, this, the matrix for these extracurricular, they will receive a bonus amount per year. And again, that's been negotiated years ago for extracurriculars in the teacher contract.
So it's not really a bonus, it's a gimmick, because they're, it, it's not like a, you earn a bonus.
Right, if they don't earn a bonus, they don't have to perform something to earn a bonus. It is like an additional.
It's like a jet.
It's just the term that's new, it's number of years.
Why does it just move into another level then? Or is it because they're at the top level?
They're at the top level.
For that position.
Just as a general question, and maybe, Tom, you might be able to answer this better. Are positions ever eliminated on the schedule? If a club doesn't have enough participation anymore, are there ever positions that are taken off of that schedule? I don't know.
I know we've talked about, uh, sorry, I know we've talked about requirements for adding. You know, we're looking at now if you want to do, like, the, what is it, did you hear how they cross, three girls? They have to have so many years of attendance and numbers and support before it will get added to the list. I would assume that they would require the same for removal. I don't know if it's in, is it in the language?
We've never, we've never talked about removal of a position. Some, some seasons and years, positions are not filled, but there's never been a complete removal of a position. I don't know about clubs.
We have had clubs that have basically gone by the way. Student interest waned, and there was no more interest in the club, in which case, we discontinued the advisor position. It's still listed as potential advisor position in the C B A, but it's not actively being filled because there's no student interest.
It's not active.
Yeah, we've had a couple of those over the years. Not, not often, but it does happen.
Jim? Okay, I'm looking right now, and I totally support everything you hear, but I have a question regarding the Eagle Ears. Apparently now, there's more events, therefore they determine they need an increase. What classifies as more events, expansion of number of events, performances by the Eagle Ears? I mean, an increase in the number of students just means that, obviously, they've allowed more students in the Eagle Ears. You used to have an audition process, but more selective for those students participating. So I'm wondering, did they jump from two purposes to twenty, did they just go from five to seven? I mean, it's, it's not a defined amount there, just an expansion.
Anybody have any information on the expansion?
I'm, I'm sorry, Jim, I missed the, I was answering the question.
Eagle Ears, they're saying there's an expansion of the number of students participating, which I thought it used to be by audition, or maybe I'm mistaken.
It is still by audition, they have many more students auditioning now. It has become a much more popular group, and the caliber of the students auditioning has increased dramatically over the past two to three years.
So the other thing I looked at was, okay, we have more students, but there's more events. When there are more events, are we talking about two more events, are we talking twice as many events? Is there classification of that?
Prior to, prior to Mrs. Combs taking it over, they used to do one or two community events per year. This past year, I believe they did six, she's targeting eight to ten for next year. You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One no. Motion carries.
Okay, we're going to move down to resignations. It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies resignations as indicated. Support staff, youth service staff, certificated staff, extracurricular staff, school health services, certificated substitutes and support substitutes.
Any discussion?
I'm just looking at that, um, for Ms. Janison, it's going to be tricky.
Timing is not good.
Yeah.
But she's, but she's a physician at school healthcare.
Okay, so you're going to be on that right away?
It's our input.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Changes status is recommended the Board of School Directors approves or ratifies the following request for change of status. Anthony Ward and Shane Haas.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Salary adjustments recommended the Board of School Directors approves a salary increase of fifty cents an hour for the polydipssent confidential secretaries as indicated.
Any discussion?
Can I just, one question? Is this their yearly raise? Is there a reason why it's not held by, centered, done by, uh, flat rate? Depending on what they're paid, it could be less, so.
It would be more.
It would be more.
Are these all?
It follows what the support party unit has in board meeting and meeting for this, and I'm just negotiating.
Are these only cool positions, so to speak, given their age?
They're not part of any, any of the working.
I mean, in terms of how they're compensated typically, I mean, are they across the board the same, or is it based upon your, your sort of service?
They're not all, they're not all getting the same salaries based on the years.
But, and they're, I mean, when they're higher, they, we're not subject to starting rates as we are with the support party. So there is more flexibility with the higher, in terms of starting, higher starting level rates, or level response.
I'm just, you know, there's just no distinction between somebody who's been here for twenty-five years and somebody who's here for two years, and they all get fifty cents, and somebody could be very, very top of the, let's say, the salary scale, you know, and somebody could be at the very beginning, which is really like tripping the same amount of money for all of them. It's just, so I'm curious about that.
It's, again.
It's what the contract is holding for.
The practice has been, the practice that has been followed is they have been receiving the same hourly rate increases. Over the past several years, that's the other support staff has received. They also receive the benefit of the lower premium share contribution. And they may get some of the benefits of, under Act ninety-three. So, uh, this is probably one area that needs to be a little more solidified going forward. I mean, we do have documented on, you know, what they receive. Again, there is no official agreement, they're not part of a subgroup of anything, it's just.
Any additional questions, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves additional staffing for special education extended year program two thousand eighteen as indicated.
Second. Any discussion?
Didn't we already approve?
Based on numbers, do you certify?
Based on numbers and some reservations. Some numbers and some resignations if people do choose that.
Oh.
Any additional discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the following features and guidance counselors for the pre-K summer program pending sufficient enrollment at a rate of thirty dollars per hour, effective August fourteenth through August sixteenth, two thousand eighteen, as listed.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Wait, is this for pre-K?
Yeah. It's tied to one time.
And that's just two days, and that's by invitation, in case you had replies of the arrangements?
I believe that, but it's also all students that were indicated to qualify.
Okay, so it doesn't qualify.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves the attached list of course requests.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
It is recommended the Board of School Directors approves sustained conferences as listed.
I mean, and I don't need to be the one to speak up, but why four people have to go to the leadership conference through P S B I? Which seems really untrue.
Yeah, well, I did, I, I think we kind of opened it up, and people expressed interest. And, um, you know, I, um, I think we have money budgeted for, you know, our board to be able to engage.
Oh, they raised some budget for that, okay.
I know this does, this is an annual, and it's probably the only time throughout the year that the board will spend money. I know this does, this is an annual, it's probably the only time throughout the year that the board will spend money on it, so.
I just, yeah.
It's, it's really, it's, it's a valuable event, particularly if you're, you know, there's just, there, there are several topics, it's really, I think, I, it would be a good idea for all board members to get a chance to go at some point.
I, I second what you just said, Dr. Hunter. This will be my second time that I've gone, I went last year. And I found it very, very helpful, it, it lets us know, you, you have a number of different, every day, a, a menu of, of different places that you can go to. And to talk about what's happening in public education. So I know Dr. Hunter and I, Hunter and I went last year. And that was my first time, I had done that, the only, the other times I just, we'd go up on a Friday to be a delegate. And, you know, and go for the, the rules of PSBA. But this has to do with what's going on in public education throughout the state. It's all people from all over the state. And I suggest any board member that, you know, maybe in the future, if you're on the board for a few years and your, your children can be taken care of. It is a three day, it's two days and a, and a Friday. And you would find it very, very helpful as yourself as a board member.
Dr. Hunter, I'd like to request whether there's something to be voted on separately?
Hold on, I have seven out of this room. Hold on, not separately? Jerry, you want to go first?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, the, the expense is a lot. I had asked earlier in the week for, uh.
Can we move on to the other?
Oh, you want to move on to the other?
Let's move on to the other, unless you're pressed to go on those. That's why I want to separate that.
Okay, so we're going to, okay, why don't you go ahead and introduce the?
We're gonna be building one of the staff conferences as indicated, one through six, eight through nine.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Brady, you wanna offer a motion to the?
Move that we approve, I deliver seven of the staff conferences.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Brady?
So, um, this is a lot of money, twenty-four sixty-five thirty-two. I had asked for a breakdown of how much it was to, to attend each, uh, each, each day. I didn't get that. I mean, fifteen hundred sixty-four for registration, so a whole lot of money. So what does that come down to?
I think it's three hundred ninety-one a person, if I'm not mistaken, for the actual registration. Uh, other, other costs include lodging. And I think, I don't know how many folks are, are planning on lodging there, but some people are commuting, others are, two folks are, are lodging and two, and two folks are commuting.
So is the per night rate, but it comes up to nine oh one?
That means two lodging, two nights, two hundred twenty-five. Forty-three per night. So four fifty-sixty-six for lodging for the entire conference, for two people.
This is, a follow-up to that, and is that for two separate rooms, or is that for one room, uh, one suite with two rooms?
Two beds.
Yeah.
Two rooms.
Okay, 'cause I know when I had gone to P-Sats, um, which is at Hershey Conference Center, they had suite rooms with multiple beds. Um, and I think they also had suite rooms with two bedrooms, with two beds each. So I don't know if that would be more cost effective option, that way you don't have to share the bedroom, but there is maybe a less expensive cost associated with that, I'm not sure.
It's for Hershey Lodge, no, Hershey, uh, it's just, there's, there's two single rooms, they have two beds, but they are, they don't have stairs. But in Hershey Lodge, it's a less expensive, Hershey Hotel is also available with about two hundred forty floor entrances.
Okay, I'm, I'm, maybe I'm confused then, because when I went on to look at what it would cost to stay overnight, there was an option for one room for four people. When I was going on registration through the PSBA website. So I'm, I'm, I'm confused now.
Tony, I would suggest that we never ask someone to share a room with other people, I think it's better that each individual person has their own room for their own conference. And that's how professionally I've always handled it, I think that's too reachable, Tony.
I actually contacted somebody in PSBA, they never returned my call, so I called the hotel to get a room, so that we could get something more here. If there is a better option, I'll, I'll explore that.
Um, I just wanted to say that I think, uh, that conferences like these are really helpful. I know this morning I called PSBA and recommended that they actually take a law firm that had presented at P-Sats when I went, um, this past year. And I think I've said P-Sats like four or five times to everybody in the room, 'cause it, it really was extremely helpful.
Go to P-Sats? Say again, did you go to P-Sats?
Yeah. Um, talking about issues such as bargaining, liability, uh, trends. And I think really, the crux of it is that it's really forward thinking. And I think just from some of the conference topics that they put out so far on the PSBA website, have been really forward thinking topics. Um, that really wanna look at what's on, what's on the horizon. And I think that that type of information is invaluable. Uh, and I, you know, I agree that this is expensive, but I think that just from my experience with similar conferences, and I haven't been here yet, but also from the board, from other board members who have been, I think that this is pretty, a very valuable investment. I also think, as a board, we should cultivate a culture where we say that more knowledge for each of us is powerful. Um, whether that's at a minimal expense or an expense like this. Um, and I think that we should definitely lead by example in how much we're spending, uh, especially on conferences like this, but I think that this is well worth it, and this is kind of the investment that we wanna see our teachers and administrators thinking too.
So I'm one of the people who is going to be lodging, and so if it helps, I don't mind commuting. So I'd rather be able to, you know, to go for the information sessions, so if that helps out with how people feel about, I mean, we're commuting.
I was, I was kind of interested in doing some carpooling, and that would further, you know, reduce our, our costs, you know, just.
Sharon, ultimately, I'm not complaining about that. I'm not complaining about that, I mean, one of the things that's really striking me about this is that when Hunter Jasmine and I went to PSBA for our school board training in December. The, they made it very clear to us that this is a lobbying organization, it's part of the, the, uh, mission of PSBA. But we say that the no good SOBs down in K Street in DC should have to pay for everything themselves. Uh, if they wanna wine and dine congressmen, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, one way of looking at this is, we're wanting, they're whining and dining school board members on the taxpayers' back, not a fan.
Well, I would say there are lobbying components, it's probably one of the smallest things that we really have to, because when you go to these conferences, you're not being lobbied, you know, you're, you're being provided an educational opportunity. You learn how to be a better board member. And you learn the issues.
I'm speaking to the board.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that I don't think that has anything to do with the value of these conferences, and, you know, in terms of the benefit that, that Hunter's got. You know, I think that Pat and I have been fortunate enough to kind of, you know, receive over the past times that, that we, you know. Maybe I'll certainly, you know, act as to the will of the board, but, you know, I think this is worthy of it, the board does not spend a whole lot of money on itself. And this is an opportunity for the board, I think, to kind of engage in, um, some inservency for themselves, which I think makes us a better board.
There was one thing you mentioned there, Dave, that you'll be driving back before, but I don't see transportation here, so I think that's something that you'll have to make sure that's addressed. High-speed for mileage.
I would not look for mileage.
Excuse me?
I would not request mileage.
Just fine, Hunter?
Yep, got it.
I'm sorry, you're on the previous.
Sure.
And, and I'm not saying, Mr. Gallup, there is no whining and dining by the PSBA.
You know, I'm, 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 I'm speaking to the larger, to the larger point that we, that we damn the people down in DC, but it's fine with these guys, you know, it, like, let's just grow taxpayer money out of them.
Well, PSBA is, is, they're working for public education, they're in Pennsylvania.
We, we have, we have a call for a question. I object, the client, go ahead.
Aye.
You object? You object, we object.
So, but before we, I'm withdrawing my hotel.
All right.
I'll make some of that off.
But you don't, you don't wanna stay overnight?
No.
I'm seriously, you, you learn a lot during the whole.
I wanna attend, but, you know, that's a schedule.
But then you, then you meet with, you wanna commute, right?
Well, these, you know, the approval would provide the option, and you have, you choose not to do it, you don't have to do it. So there's no requirement that you do it, we approve these costs. You can, you can withdraw it, you can go or you can withdraw, depending on your preference.
I just, I, I wanted to add quick, Jerry, to what you had said. Um, luckily, we have full opportunity to weigh in on the advocacy component of PSBA. Um, and that's why we're electing voting delegates, is because we will have direct input into what that agenda is. Um, and we are, you know, of a thousand probably of governors of PSBA, we are the governors of PSBA. And we're gonna tell them what to do, um, by the collective will of the School Boards Association, and that's why we have the delegates. So I appreciate what you're saying, and I definitely don't agree with everything that PSBA puts out, especially to even us, let alone to what they're talking to members of, uh, legislature about. Um, but I think that, uh, that's where it would be important for the delegates, I believe it's Sharon and I, uh, to make sure that we're reading carefully and sharing some of our thoughts with the board ahead of time.
Okay, we're gonna move forward with the low on this. I think we have a motion and a second. All in favor, it's a second. Other base. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have one opposed, and a motion carries. We're gonna move on.
I would just like to request that if you return that we get some feedback and some information from the facilities committee to share some of this, thank you.
Yeah, and I would also, again, reiterate, I think it's a good idea for, you know, to think about it, all the board members who haven't gone yet, really think about it if you can. I know that people work, but if you can take some time away, uh, it's, it's, I think, it's more, but we'd be impressed.
Student functions. Mrs. Strachan?
Nobody minds. I am going to recommend that board school directors approves items A through D altogether.
Before I got to object, Jim. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, so we're going to then move on to committee reports, athletic committee, Sharon?
Um, no report about any athletic activities, uh, but I do wanna raise, um, the point about the athletic committee's recommendation regarding, um, the referral, using a lot of bar words. The referral for the facilities committee to consider the softball project for this fall of two thousand and eighteen.
Baseball.
What, what did I say? I said softball, oh my gosh. It's really not a good night. Baseball, the baseball project, and I think that Mr. Brizouy had gotten a second quote for the outfield, which we wanted to recommend. I think we had an open recommendation that the facilities committee consider that at their next meeting, so that that can be considered a project for the fall. Jeez, you're like a committee chair.
Do you have any specifications and details, items on this?
Um, I can, yeah, I'll send.
I'd like to see the specifications, understand them, without purchase, purchase of the grade badge.
Okay, so, so I, I thought that you had gotten that email from us?
I may have, but believe me, I get about five hundred emails.
Okay, so I'll make sure.
I got lost in the shuffle of things I didn't catch.
Okay, so I will, I will board that later, okay?
Thanks, Mr. Strachan, anything else with that points? Nothing else?
I have nothing else, I'm sorry.
Okay. Uh, curriculum committee, Mrs. Hatter?
Uh, I have a court.
Is there a meeting coming up?
Uh, August fourteenth is the next curriculum, um, meeting. Actually, I would say I know that they're writing curriculum now for the summer, so, uh, we're hearing about that on the fourteenth and not coming beyond, and otherwise, nothing else to worry about. But August fourteenth is the next meeting, six o'clock, in the professional development.
Facilities, Mr. Brady. Our time on the committee is, we're gonna recommend board school directors accept proposal from Cole Brothers to replace the senior high school DT Coolington pump at a cost not to exceed twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Cost proposal is per post dollars contract number zero one six dash one two two.
Second. Any discussion?
Is this an emergency thing?
We're running on emergency right now because the one's broken. We have not been able to secure any more calls to give us a report. Several of them asked, I mean, it's too small a project, I would, they would not be thinking of that.
Uh, we know much about Cole Brothers, or they a local, uh, organization?
They have worked on the pump, uh, in prior years, this is the main pump, primary pump, uh, which they worked on several years ago. Now that has failed, uh, we asked about rebuilding, and they said parts are too new now. The second pump they're operating on, the backup, is also missing, so it's imperative to get a pump.
This is just to replace the primary pump, we'll, we'll also replace the secondary pump?
Just the primary.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Couple of quick things, some updates for our summer projects. At this point, the junior high school roof is at ninety percent completion, which had the planned completion date of July twentieth, weather permitting. The second thing we have is some facility improvement projects by KCBA continue, including that Coolington pump we just mentioned. The third thing we have is the LED replacement, and I had some specific questions that came out of our last update. The project's about ninety percent complete, uh, or is, or is going well for most of our buildings, but there's some questions about the Owana Creek building. And when the building was constructed, we intentionally had worked with Lutron to put in dinning and accords made specifically with the shade operation system in order to provide the most economical, efficient operating ability. And I'm very cautious about what's going on right now with the program as far as pricing into LED lights. Um, my, the first caution that really comes to mind is that we hired a contractor who was very much aware theoretically of our systems. And should have been aware of the fact that they were running into a green lead certified building, and it had modern fixtures. So I'm wondering, first, did they study the building before they put the price in? And second off, what it's going to cost us to upgrade the lights that they're ready to get, before they touch anything? I, I, I don't know, I don't think we're getting answers tonight, but there are good questions that come in there.
No, but Mr. Brizouy is aware of those, I know he presented a couple of options. Uh, one would be, what's more expensive?
He justified, but he denied it's much more expensive without a dollar.
Sure, but, that's been it. Understood, so he'll be, he's, a application needs, you'll have to.
The, the last thing I have tonight is that we're going to have a, a facilities committee meeting in August. I'll work with Mrs. Gaiders to set a date, probably towards the Gay in the North, probably on a Wednesday night, making hole.
Thanks, Mr. Brady. Personnel committee, Mr. Brady, you have anything here from that?
I know that our personnel committee has been discussing a few items recently that are, um, executive committee level, so we cannot discuss it at this time, but we're alive and well and breathing.
Thank you. Policy committee, um, just wanted to bring the, uh, to the board's attention the conversation we had regarding the, um, the high school student who had requested a wa, a sort of reduction or waiver in, in tuition to be able to continue, despite the fact that he's a non-resident student. Uh, formerly a homeless student, and, uh, Dr. Phillips and his staff have, have looked into the matter, have asked the, uh, the parent for, or guardian, I suppose, for, uh, information.
for, uh, information regarding household income. Uh, and also case in consideration in terms of what modifications could be made to our current policy that might be able to accommodate, uh, these kind of questions in the future. Uh, so the policy committee will be probably looking at modifications to policy two oh two, which, um, has to do with eligibility for non-resident students, um, to participate in our school programs. And, uh, you know, essentially, in, in the case that we were talking about before, the, the family, under a proposed policy, would be making too much money and to be considered for a reduction in tuition. They would be welcome to send the student to school here on a full tuition basis, which is what the policy calls for. But even a modified policy that we would consider would not, um, accommodate, uh, you know, a family that, that had the income and capability that they have. So, and from what I understand, the family now has retracted or withdrawn their request.
Yes, they've withdrawn, petition for the student to attend here.
So, uh, we did follow up as we had, promised the parent. I'm assuming that's been communicated, all that's been communicated.
Yes, yes, it's been, I agree with it, but it's been finalized.
So, so, and, you know, being back to policy two oh two, we'll definitely look at some possible modifications that, that we can do.
For the next meeting, yes.
Okay, great. That's all for the policy. Uh, committee, uh, technology committee, Mrs. Baker.
The security camera projects are underway in several buildings with an expected completion on the week before school opens. Migration from Windstream to the Fidel is happening over the next month. Chromebooks collected from sixth and ninth players during the last week of school. Replacement of Chromebooks have begun shipping. Tonight, we will be approving a purchase of leased assets to resell to a third party. The cost to buy out will be more than offset by the buyout from the Pennsylvania-based establishment. E-rate summer wireless access points have arrived and are being installed this week. But summer maintenance work, cleaning and updating is a full swing. That's my report.
Thanks, Mrs. Baker. Uh, beauty, uh, education foundation, Mrs. Hacker.
I do have a report. Um, ECEF's annual golf tournament is just over two weeks away. And this year's tournament is on course for a record-breaking year. Can you turn off your speakers? Thank you, sir. Um, so they're super excited, uh, we are super excited this year. Uh, this tournament is on course for a record-breaking year. They, we're still in need of a few volunteers to help with registration and on the course during the event. If you have some extra time in your day, excuse me, on Friday, August third, between eleven AM and six PM, please let Amy Lutz know. This week, ECEF received notification that we've been awarded a challenge grant of fifteen hundred dollars from Mascaro and Sons. Simply put, in order to receive Mascaro's fifteen hundred dollars, we need to secure another fifteen hundred dollars to complete the gift by August first. If you have any suggestions or would like to personally donate this important match gift challenge, please contact Amy Lutz. And of course, super exciting, this week marks the May Days in July event to benefit ECEF. We're looking forward to being a part of this inaugural event, and we hope to see everyone there.
Thanks, Ms. Hacker. BTC, uh, BCTC Joint Operating Committee.
So we met on, uh, June twenty-seventh, and I, I don't think that these briefs, the meeting briefs were put into the packet, so I can get that sent to you. The news that she sends us, Dr., okay, so I, I guess Jerry, he didn't have them, I have heard my, my, my. I didn't have the opportunity to get that, because that has a lot of information about the meetings. And I feel like, uh, one of the things I wanted to share, um, that I, uh, was happy to hear is that they have the CBL, CDL program, commercial driver license, that actually brings in a profit of BCTC. Um, they said a strong revenue and profit. And, um, besides having like adult education training, um, they also do, they are also testers. And in twenty eighteen, they had six hundred and thirty-five, um, testers at two hundred and fifty or three hundred and fifty dollars per test, like their third-party testing. So I thought that was good, you know, to have money coming in. You like that, right, Jerry? They, they, I, I think I mentioned before about they're trying to decide with their, they're expanding their welding program. That's one of the programs that's growing. And they're looking at either a new building that's going to cost two million, five hundred thousand, or renovating the current building at two million, one hundred thousand. So they were valuing, you know, the pros and cons of that, with the completion date of twenty twenty, and then start-up date of twenty twenty-one. But that is one of their programs that are growing. They also look at, um, they have the data on how many projected enrollment, or how many enrollment, and, uh, they look at programs that they may have to, um, they call it put on probation. So like, um, they're adding a second sports medicine and rehabilitative therapy section, eliminating, uh, the health-related technology program, um, for next year. They have two programs on probation, which is graphic imaging technology, um, their enrollment was down for that, and the precision machine technology is awesome. They had the, um, I don't know if you're, uh, with the steam camp that they do. Do you know, do they have any students attending that?
The steam camp?
The steam camp, yeah, they held that, okay, we met on twenty-seventh, so it was the week before, that made it like June eighteenth. They had seventy-six students, you know, come from all the, uh, sending schools. Uh, that sounded like, really, that we saw a, a report and also saw, uh, pictures of what the students do. They attend for the week, uh, like from nine to two-thirty. Seventh and eighth grade students are the ones who, uh, are eligible to attend. They spend, uh, they, they get to experience five different, uh, programs, different career pathways. So, um, so I, I hope that we had some students and, um, I think that we, you know, like to encourage our students to go to attend that. And we mentioned that they gave off their bond of thirty-four million dollars, so they were real happy about that. We meet again on, oh, we don't have a meeting. They give us a little vacation from there for July, so we meet again maybe in August.
You get a vacation from that, never they give you one?
Yeah, yeah, I come back to cook my own dinner now, right? All right, so.
Sharon, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, did they allude or say to, um, attendance at BCTC rising, uh, generally speaking? Are they saying that it is rising, staying stable, decreasing? I'm not sure if you can answer that, but.
Uh, no, I cannot answer that. I have, I, I cannot answer that, but I do have, um, I do have a paper here that, uh, says how many students they have in all the programs. Uh, but that's for twenty eighteen, nineteen. I don't know how that, whose years, I can ask, I can get that information.
I think that would, I think that would be helpful, um, just because I think it gives a idea or a trajectory about where students, uh, are using their time. Because I, I, I think that some of the trades training that occurs at BCTC, I would hope that's on the rise generally for students at the high school, um, at the high schools, I should say.
Are you talking, you're talking about overall, is, is standing?
Yeah.
I'll ask the next time I go to meetings.
Okay.
But I know, like, what they really look at is which programs are, you know, standing, like welding, and then which ones have low enrollment, and then they adopt, you know, um, their programs.
Hmm.
Right, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. BCIU board of directors, uh, attended a meeting on June twenty-first. BCIU board, they, uh, re-elected their officers. Uh, Tim Hafner from Fleetwood is the president, and Vice President Gary Kim from, uh, Glen Valley. Um, also voted on the delegate to attend the, uh, PSBA, assembling the conference, uh, to the voting, uh, meeting. Uh, and then finally, uh, another big item was the authorization of a collective bargaining agreement with the, uh, BCIU, um, Education Association. It is, uh, an agreement that goes from two thou, July two thousand and eighteen to, to June of, uh, twenty twenty-one. So those were, that was big, big information, or, or big, uh, big decision. Um, August sixteenth is the next, uh, is the next board meeting for BCIU board directors. That's all for my part. Um, legislative liaison?
Mr. Gallup, your voice, sir.
Township burden?
Liaison.
Mr. Gallup. Sorry, that's Mr. Japine, isn't it? He's not here. And payment requests, uh, Mrs. Baker.
All right, we have payment requests from, um, the general fund of one million, eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eighty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents, from the capital reserve account of two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-three cents, and from the capital project funds, one million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents. A movement we paid on this.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I just wanted to bring it up before we get into the superintendent's report. The, uh, ad hoc transportation committee has been meeting. We've had, uh, we've had two meetings, uh, since our last board meeting. Well, we've met, uh, March the seventeenth, July ninth. Uh, we've been on June twenty-fifth and July ninth. The June twenty-fifth meeting was, uh, to discuss options for using propane, um, and for our buses and, uh, for the motor fleet to propane, propane. And that was, uh, hosted by Rhodes Energy, and so we had, uh, representative of Rhodes Energy, and also, I think it was, was it upper, upper Walden School, Mr. President? Yeah. And then on the, uh, on the ninth, um, we have representative from Pasbo who came in to talk to us about options related to contracting transportation services. So we're trying to move forward and cover as many areas related to transportation as we can before we ultimately make some big decisions before the end of this, uh, this school year. And our next meeting is August thirteenth, and all board members are, um, welcome to attend. That's all for that committee. It's going to be interview. Yeah. And, um, superintendent's report.
Yeah, they just said, sir. So far, we're having a very busy summer. Teacher flex, excuse me, teacher flex days, including activities such as curriculum articulation and instructional training are happening and will continue to happen. Purchasing of materials for next year continue. Buildings are being cleaned and prepped for the upcoming school year. Construction projects are on target to be completed before the students return. Uh, leadership week will take place next week. Administration will focus for a week on communication, collaboration, and team-building activities. Highlight of the week is a day down in Cabrini College with professors from their leadership program, providing leadership sessions to our administration group. Many team-building activities are also planned throughout the week. Interviews are being completed to fill our few open positions, and work is being completed on induction for new staff as well as the first aid service program. We received a nice letter from Senator Schwenk, recognizing we received a Pennsylvania Department of Education grant to provide breakfast for students at Jacksonwald Elementary. I called her to thank you, to thank her for the letter, as well as inform her that through the No Kid Hungry program, we also have breakfast programs at Reifton, Owan Creek, and Lorain, and Lorain as well. Echoing the update for the May Days, uh, connect ads will be going out throughout the week to the Exeter community, inviting them to attend all the Exeter Media Community Festival events that will be taking place this Friday and Saturday at the Exeter, Exeter Township Senior High School. Gates will be opening at three PM to eleven PM on Friday to enjoy food, games, football activities, kids' activities. And then the nightcap will be the movie Jumanji, playing in the Dunn Thomas Stadium at dusk. On Saturday, the gates will be open from twelve PM to ten PM, where there will be numerous local vendors, food trucks, more fun for kids, Exeter student talent, the fabulous Grease Band will be playing at night. And then again, the night will end with an amazing firework show. All proceeds will benefit the Exeter Community Education Foundation, and everyone is welcome to come out and join us in this community-driven and community-focused event. A special highlight, and I see him sitting in the crowd, Mr. Campbell will be there from twelve to three for the meet, the new high school principal. The inside Burks business appreciation and recognition reception is scheduled for August ninth. We had two teachers, uh, Kristy Kobel and Lisa Spees participated as an intern in the program this summer. They will be honored for their internship, as well as they will be presenting a, um, presentation on what they learned with their experiences throughout their project during job-like breakout sessions. Finally, I would just like to, uh, highlight the fact that on Tuesday, August second, administrator's conference through the county. We will be at the Penn State Burks event, our administrators will be there. At eight forty-five, the keynote speaker will be a former Navy SEAL, David Cooper. We will also introduce our new administrators throughout the county to all the other, uh, administrators. We will be having lunch and job-like of meetings that will take place, and a special legal session by attorney Michael Levin will cap off the event.
That is my word for today. Thanks, Dr. Phillips. Um, concludes our agenda of any other board members, so requests to be heard this time.
I would like to mention, um, I got my newsletter in the mail last week, and it was really well done. And I just want to thank, um, Dr. Waiters and Dr. Phillips and Shor as well, as well as, um, all the other collaborators. Um, but I really liked how it was very student-focused and student-centered, and it was such a plethora of, um, different things, and not just pages filled, you know, I really, I really thought it was super well-done. I was really proud to feel like I was kind of a part of it, even though I really wasn't, but, great job. True.
It was an impact, yeah. Any other comments at this time?
And I would have heard it, because I thought, I read it too, but it was excellent.
You were making that.
So if there are other comments, I'll accept a motion for, oh, I'm sorry. Excellent. You caught me, break the news, I'm sorry.
No, I, I forgot to mention that they had some, um, the principal from West, they created a new position, assistant director. And so the principal from the West campus was given that position, and then they hired a new principal by the name of Paul Kreider for the, uh, as principal of West campus, and Kristy Enson became assistant director. I had to pee for your resume or something, so, okay. Thank you for letting me do it.
That's true. Close this, sorry. So I'll accept a motion for adjournment. Motion. No second? For adjournment. Thanks, everybody, for coming in. Thanks, administrative team for being here.